Let me start by introducing our guests today. The three MVLA school board candidates, Vadim Katz, Alex Levich and Li Zhang. Vadim Katz has been a resident of Mountain View for 16 years. He and his wife are proud parents, have an MVHS freshman, an eighth grader at Block and a 60-pound golden doodle. Professionally, Vadim has been an engineering leader at Adobe and LinkedIn. He is passionate about growing careers of individuals, including those with non-traditional backgrounds. He believes that learning starts in early years and as an immigrant who came to the USA with a high school education, he wants to focus on creating opportunities for all students to thrive, academically, emotionally and socially. Alex Levich is a longtime resident of Mountain View Los Altos and is a dedicated parent with two children in public schools. She holds a Bachelor of Science in Computer Science and an MBA from UC Berkeley, bringing 20 years of leadership in the tech industry, along with small business ownership experience. As a trustee at Bowman School, Alex played a key role in launching a new high school and improving math programs. A passionate advocate for education of women in STEM, she is solely endorsed by Democratic Party and Democratic Women activists, as well as outgoing MVLA trustees and council members from Los Altos, Mountain View and Los Altos Hills. Li Zhang has been a local resident for 23 years. Since settling in the area in 2001, Li has been deeply involved in the community. She was the president of Neighborhood Association, on the MVLA Family Partnership Council, Bookwave Chair at Allman School, Tea Time Club organizer at MVHS and Vice Chair LASD Bond Oversight Committee. Li is a senior manager in finance and tax at Tesla and she holds a PhD in chemistry from UCSD and a master's in financial engineering from UC Berkeley. Li's husband has worked as a teacher and tutor in the MVLA school district and her son has gone through both the LASD and the MVLA school systems. We're thrilled to have all three of you here with us today. We know you are right in the midst of a busy campaign session and we really appreciate you spending some time with us. Thanks again. We don't have a timer, but please try to keep your answers to around 60 seconds, up to 60 seconds each, so we can fit in the 10 questions I have and then hopefully we can get all of the audience questions in. I will switch the response order for each question. We'll start with Vadim on the first question, then Alex and then Li. First question. I think we all understand and many of us agree with the decision to move to area-based elections. How can the trustees best prepare us as a community for working in the district's best interest in the new election environment?
Well, first of all, thank you for having me here. It's a pleasure. This is something new for everybody. One thing the trustees can do is offer full transparency to the community. I know there is going to be at least four meetings dedicated to efforts to, you know, how we rezone our community and which area that each trustee is going to be responsible for. I would definitely encourage the public to stay involved and raise their concerns or questions as early as possible so that trustees can offer the support to address those questions.
Thank you. Alex.
I'll echo Vadim and thank you guys for having me here. It's a pleasure and a wonderful opportunity to share my thoughts and views on things. Certainly, the election by trustee areas is a completely new thing to MVLA. Many other districts are going or have gone through similar processes and we should absolutely learn from it. It is very key for the public to understand what's going to happen to be involved, to give their feedbacks through various public meetings and forums. And at the same time, it is important for the board to actually make sure that the spirit of this particular law is actually preserved in a ways that's applicable in Los Altos and can be well managed through MVLA resources and time, et cetera. And so having an opportunity for underrepresented communities to be presented on the board is very important. And at the same time, the board should work to create engagement within those particular areas of a district to make sure we have the right candidates who can actually continue to grow our district and help it thrive even further.
Thanks. Li.
Yes. Hi. Nice meeting all you guys over here. Very appreciative for this opportunity to communicate for the communities here. Regarding to the change of the trustee areas, I understand the concern of the lawsuit was brought up and understand fully on board with a board direction of doing a district-wide election. I do believe regardless of the change, the role of the board should still stay the same, which is responsible for the value of belief and the priority of the community, the community as a whole. So I were definitely going forward, if I'm elected, working with all the rest of the board member to being supportive and working together with superintendent to serve our community and to serve all the students, families in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Li. Next question, Alex first, then Li, then Vadim. Given the ethnic studies curriculum is controversial to many parents, if you were elected, how would you balance the concern of parents with the district and state academic goals? And would you support the continued implementation of the ethics of the ethnic studies curriculum?
Yeah. So the intent of ethnic studies is to really help people develop empathy and understand the different minorities and underrepresented groups. That's super important for us as a society, as a community, in doing that in a manner that really teaches people empathy, but at the same time empowers all groups in a respectful way and creates a civil dialogue for people to discuss is super important. So I think looking at the curriculum, after years that MVLA has tried it, understanding the different opinions of students, parents, and then making decisions and policy of how do we create a standardized way of teaching that in a way that again is empowering to all students group and creates a civil dialogue where people can actually open up their mind and think about different things they have not considered before. And yet every group is empowered. It's super important and that's how I plan to approach this.
Li, you're up next.
Yes. As an immigrant minority myself, I fully understand the intention of, you know, to implement ethnic studies. And I very, I believe a majority of the community are welcome that this update of the curriculum. This, I, the only thing I want to echo is my son himself actually is a history major. So I'm fully immersed in education, in history and around ethnic studies. I would think if we can provide kids more opportunity of learning global history before they embark on, you know, ethnic studies would give them a more full spectrum of the history and so they can learn, can absorb the curriculum for ethnic studies better from more, after they have more historical background globally. So that would be my only suggestion to accommodate him more history background before they embark on ethnic studies. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Vadim.
Yeah. So we have to remember what the intent of ethnic studies was. My understanding, the intent of the government of California was to use this course to demonstrate achievements and contributions from traditionally marginalized communities and teach our kids how to recognize the value. Now, I do have concerns of whether this is actually what is being taught. And I would definitely consider listening to or not consider. I would love for the public to chime in because as a board and as administrator for the schools, we have control over the curriculum of ethnic studies. So we must focus on emphasizing the contributions from various communities. But we also must focus on emphasizing how people are able to overcome challenges because we all face various challenges as immigrants, as people of color, as people with, you know, other aspects that differentiate us. Oh, sorry, that's my timer. And so my focus on ethnic studies would be, can we emphasize abilities for people to persevere and be successful and grow as a society?
Thank you. Next question. This time, start with Li, then Vadim, then Alex. The Los Altos City Council voted to no longer fund the School Resource Officer Program and so LAHS no longer has SROs. The SRO program is considered by many to be successful at Mountain View High School. If elected, how would you address this disparity of School Resource Officer Programs between the two high schools? Li?
Yeah. I think this is a little bit concerning from our end as well. When I was dropping off my flyers and asking for feedback from the communities, especially in the Los Altos High School areas, people, a lot of parents are concerned about, you know, the difference in see of the Resource Officer Los Altos High School side. I would think this thing needs to be reviewed and have more data points to see if the incident happened before was under a certain kind of circumstances and, you know, going forward, if the resources should be reallocated outside. That would be my take on what happened before and what we should, board should look into going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Vadim.
So this is something that, again, one of the roles of the board members is to listen to the community. I have not heard concerns from the people that I have spoken with about this subject. So I definitely want to learn more. Whether something works for Mountain View High School or Los Altos High School, it's fine to keep things separate depending on what people want to have. So I'm open to listening to the concerns of the people. Just remember that all of this means that resources, limited resources that the district has can be dedicated to other programs. That really depends on the community and the value that they feel they perceive from the community officer, the resource officer versus some other things that we can spend our money on.
Thanks. Alex.
Yeah, so this did come up in my listening tour. I wouldn't say that a lot of parents are concerned about it from what I've seen, but it did come up. I would say a couple of things. We need to deeply and much better understand the problems that exist in Mountain View High School and Los Altos High School that would require such support. And also why the support in Los Altos High School was removed. From what I've heard, this was connected to how the police officer was perceived by the students and sort of their power, et cetera. And so there are a few ideas that I have of how we can address that if indeed such support is necessary in a ways that's sort of more aligned with how the community can feel comfortable. One of those things is having the officers actually not wearing officer's uniform, but look like sort of like civilians and still support the high school in the ways it's needed. I'd also echo Vadim that it's really important to understand where the problems are, where we need to support these resources as opposed to just doing it for the sake of consistency. If you're doing it in Mountain View High Schools, then we must do it in Los Altos. Resources are always limited and it's up to the board to really invest them very strategically and make sure both schools and as a district thrive and grow as much as possible.
And then, next question. This would be Alex first, then Vadim, then Li. I'm going to now ask two questions regarding the current financial squeeze in education as most school districts are facing enrollment declines and increasing expenses. First question. What should MVLA trustees be doing to provide better mid-to-long-term planning tools, programs and analysis to help local districts best mitigate this financial squeeze?
Yeah, so I sort of think about it as both the financial squeeze and sort of the changes in enrollment that we are observing, right? There is some decline in enrollment as well. And so it really requires a very proactive and strategic approach. We have to adjust resources while maintaining the quality of education. That means evaluating any budget cuts that we need to do and make sure it doesn't impact essential services like mental health support, special education, academic progress, we have to support academic excellence. I would also think about expanding some of the programs like vocational and dual enrollment programs, which don't only attract students, but they actually prepare them for diverse career paths after high school. I would also collaborate with community partners such as other colleges, cities, especially cities, to secure additional funding and resources. And thus, we can, this way, we can actually reduce the financial burden and the cuts on the district. And lastly, we always have to be very transparent, ensuring transparency in financial planning will allow us to really prioritize key strategic investments while managing the costs to the extent that we can given this environment.
Thank you. Vadim.
Yeah. You know, it's a typical problem that exists in the industry that I have dealt with, so it's nothing new. I think we need to focus on, first of all, what's the reason for the declining, you know, enrollment? Is it demographics? And focus on providing the best possible services so that we can reverse this trend. You know, limit or reduce the programs that are not considered to be essential, you know, similar to what Alex mentioned. And emphasize the value that the board delivers to the residents, residents with children in school and residents also without, so that people are willing to contribute more, work more with MVLA funding organizations so that we can substitute some of their, you know, government or tax-related funding with just contributions from the people for as long as people recognize that the value that we provide.
Thank you. Li.
Yeah, I understanding majority of the funding, close to 88%, our property tax value goes to the salary of the teachers. So we do have to maintain that as a baseline because we need excellent teacher and retention to do great education. Beyond that, the remaining budgets. I'm a professional in finance and tax and budgeting is my key work. So I believe the remaining has to be allocated very smartly. We need to collect as much data as possible to see what's the essential needs for the students and to support the teachers. And in addition, we need some kind of transparency. I think people, people are busy. A lot of people, if you go around and ask them, if you were running out of money, asking for a measure, they're going to say, oh, didn't we have, we already provided this much tax dollars to the school district. So transparency is a key. So we need to have better communication just in case we have our shortfall for the funding. We can raise additional funding has community understanding, but that's just Plan B. Plan A, as the previous two candidates already alluded, we have to allocate our budget smartly for the students and for the teachers. That's the conclusion I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. The order will be Li, then Alex, then Vadim. What level or percentage of dedicated maintenance funding do you believe residents expect the, you or the district to support? And in your opinion, should a reserve be created around maintenance expenses so that unplanned maintenance costs don't cut into current period expenses, which impact students and teachers? Li?
Okay. Yeah. I am a former believer to plan. One of the best planning is to have reserve for the rainy day. I do believe Los Altos High School has already upgraded an administrative building. And for any future funding, we need, where we have any shortfall, if we have to have any additional measure, I would recommend to exclude senior citizens from this additional fundraising. But as what I mentioned earlier, this is Plan B. For Plan A, we should have a reserve going forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Alex.
Yeah, I'm also in a very strong cap of reserves are a must as a small business owner. I can tell you that running anything without a financial reserve seems not very strategic to me. And so certainly, a good level of reserves always have to exist. Some of it will be for various maintenance or things that come up. Some of it could be for, I don't know, urgent programs or things like that. So reserves are essential. Certainly, we have to continue and keep updating the facilities and making sure that the environment for students is more up to date and also very safe. Lastly, we also have to think about enrollment and the growth in the population of students. I mentioned a lot of declining enrollment earlier, but as we look into the future and the interest rates coming down and the economy hopefully recovering in the next couple of years and Mountain View building more and more housing, I think there is an expectation that the population will grow and there will be additional enrollment in students, which may require additional classrooms and expanding the high schools or even if things grow very big, then potentially even a third high school. So we have to keep reserves planned for that particular scenario and stay very close to the city on the various demographics projections and additional funding sources so we can support anything that comes up in the future. David, now you're on mute.
Vadim.
Yeah. All right. So I think the question was more on the maintenance, you know, how to maintain the budget for ongoing maintenance. And we definitely need to have the reserves. This is something that doesn't, isn't likely to change year over year. So we have, you know, plenty of experience. Well, the board should have plenty of experience. I'm looking forward to learning what it is and we definitely need to maintain that reserve to make sure that our classrooms are suitable for kids to be in because otherwise you can't learn. Anything extra that we perceive will need to happen, needs to be planned ahead.
Great. Thank you. Our next question, order will be Vadim, then Li, then Alex. It's been difficult for local school districts to hire and retain high-quality teachers due to the high cost of housing. However, some districts are investing in affordable housing for teachers. If elected, what specific proposals would you make to address this issue and how would you finance them? On this one, you have up to 90 seconds. This is the one question that's kind of complicated, but yet very important. Vadim.
Yeah, all right. So I'll set the timer. Yeah. In my campaign goals, as I analyze what my priorities are, support for adults who are influencing the ability of students to learn is at the top of the list. So we cannot be successful in supporting our kids' future without high-quality teachers. Now, due to unfortunate circumstances of how we've evolved as a society, you know, teachers went from one of the most sought-after profession and recognized and respected profession, you know, 50, 60 years ago, to something that, you know, the best teachers have to consider whether it's something that they will support their livelihood if they go into the profession, they follow their passion. I really wish it wasn't this way so that we can benefit from people who are passionate in what they do, that they felt, they could feel that going, by going into the profession, they could be well compensated. Now, I know compensation is limited and the cost of living in specifically in our area is very, very high. So I would be very supportive of finding ways to enable teachers to live near the local schools so that they can become members of the community, so they can have that benefit, which is not monetary benefit, but the benefit of, you know, not spending a lot of time commuting to schools because they have to be in person, they don't have the luxury of, you know, working remotely. That's something I would definitely support. I think my time is up.
Thank you. Li.
Yeah, like what you said, this is a very complicated issue. And school board alone won't be able to undertake these kind of efforts. We do have examples from Mountain View District that the city, work together with the city, get some special benefits of getting lower-priced housing for teachers. So if I'm elected on the board, I will definitely work together with both Mountain View and Los Altos and even the Bay Area Housing Organizations, try to see if there's any way we can help our teachers. My understanding is our teachers in the Mountain View Los Altos School District actually are the most fortunate. They get the highest pay of in the area. Even with that, they will have, they have a hard time to live nearby. And I don't think this is a very unique issue for teachers alone. And there are a lot of professionals like me, for example, working in the tech industry for many years and struggling to purchase place in the area. So we all sympathize the teachers. We want to maintain, remain, have them remain in the local areas. So we're, I will definitely collaborate with all resources available to support teachers to be able to live close to the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex.
Yeah. So teacher compensation and retention are key priorities for me. We really can't have excellent schools without excellent educators. It's just as simple as that. In terms of housing and affordable housing in particular, it is extremely important because we live in a very high cost of living area. It's very hard, as Li mentioned, not only for teachers, but for other professionals to actually have affordable housing here. I also believe that it's crucial not to just focus the efforts on the board, but work with the cities and potentially other organizations. But cities is actually the most important. And other local colleges who also have teachers to explore housing-related benefits. I think in the short term, a couple of things that we could be doing is providing discounts at apartment complexes by partnering with the city, getting some grants, bonds, et cetera, and sort of helping teachers in the short term. In the long term, we definitely need to explore how we can create more affordable housing options, whether that's building something in collaboration with the cities or the ANZA, et cetera. That's sort of one of the explorations I want to do with the city. Mountain View Visma District has actually done exactly that recently with the Mountain View City and they built a complex of 122 apartments. In my listening tour, talking both to the community and the city council members, I've actually mentioned that there might be opportunities to take some portion of that apartment, of those apartments, and allocate to other districts if Mountain View Visma wouldn't want to use all of them. So that's an immediate opportunity that could be helpful for MVLA and I think the board should consider it. Lastly, I will say that we have to, in addition to advocating for housing benefits, competitive pay, et cetera, we have to think about the holistic approach to overall pack compensation package or benefits package for our teachers that goes beyond monetary benefits. MVLA already provides ongoing professional development training. I advocate to expand it with targeted workshops on things like emerging topics like social-emotional learning, trauma-informed teaching, or the respectful dialogue on divisive topics. And this will give teachers the tools to navigate challenging conversations and maintain a supportive learning environment and teach our students of how to deal with all of those. We should also partner with local colleges to provide knowledge sharing with college professors and helping both institutions create an easier path for educators and students. And lastly, MVLA already has a strong mentorship program for teachers where experienced educators are coupled with new ones. We should actually enhance this program by formalizing regular check-ins, classroom observations, curriculum development guidance. And that can provide both sort of support to new teachers coming in and additional development opportunities for teachers who are actually the mentors and are the more senior folks.
Thank you. Next question. I'll start with Alex, then Li, then Vadim. Two students were recently hit by a motorist near Los Altos High School. There's been other incidents in the past. If elected, what specifically would you do to address what you believe to be the greatest safety issues are at the two high schools? Alex.
Yeah. Safety and safe routes is a critical evergreen area of investment. We can never really stop investing in that because this is about the lives of our students, right? And the lives of the community. I would say a couple of things. I think the particular issues that I've seen in Mountain View High School are around its school location on Oak and Truman and sort of the whole environment around Oak School and Mountain View High School. So introducing bike lanes there and really fully understanding the environment and the type of challenges that exist and working in partnership with the city to really introduce better ways to address safety, super important. For Los Altos High School, I would say probably the biggest safety issue I've seen is actually parking, where there is a lot of, there is a lack of, and deficit of parking spaces and the community and the students are all over there with many, many cars. So another approach we could take, there is actually educate students of how to be safe on the road, how to park correctly, what are the different areas that they should be parking in. And of course, work with the city again to figure out how we can create more spaces for parking. And again, if there are particular Los Altos High Schools-related safety issues, again, work with the city to figure out what we can introduce. Is it bike lanes? Uh, is it more stop signs? Uh, and really keeping our pulse on that, that's super important and a critical issue for the district.
Thank you. Uh, Lee.
I, this, this is very close to my heart. Uh, my son has been biking to, uh, both Black and Mountain View High School since, uh, junior. Junior high years, um, I, I do observe on the roads, um, there are some, you know, which is not very safe, like. A really big road that they have to bike to and I'm not really sure, uh, every single students. Are fully, um, immersed into riding the bike in the safe route suggested to them or they're even aware about that. And I think the number one is education. Education, um, so kids know they, which route is at the best way for them to get to school. A second, second of all, I agree with, uh, Alex, um, there is a parking issue in Los Altos High School, especially for e-bike. So some students couldn't find parking space. Um, I don't see as much, much issue for the, the parking for the bike in Mountain View High School, uh, because I volunteer regularly, uh, for biking school. Um, so I will definitely work with the city both, uh, city of Los Altos and Mountain View City if we can better address this issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Vadim.
Um, yeah, so. One thing that I would like to do is, uh, you know, remove any type of punishment for being late. Uh, I'd rather kids to be late than, than sorry, uh, and remember these are the kids that are in high school, that some of them are using e-bikes, some of them are using cars. Uh, I mean, it applies to adults as well, you know, parents to, to drive safely. Uh, another thing that I would love to consider is some community support, you know, just put parents and, and the community members on the street observing what, what's going on, um. I remember talking to some parents about their child running a red light on a new bike. It just happens that I was walking on the street with my dog and, and I saw the kid going. The kid lost privileges for e-bike for a week and hopefully learned that lesson, but. Have I not been there, right? They would not have known and at the end of the day, everybody stays safe. Um, so just having community members out there and, you know, recognizing whom to notify when they see something that's not happening, that's not right. Um, and, and teaching the kids that they need to bike safely as well, um, because I've seen a lot of instances when that is not happening.
Thanks very much. Uh, next question, the order will be Lee, then Vadim, then Alex. We see the data about food insecurity in Santa Clara County. What more would you propose to address food insecurity in our school age children?
You mean the, the free lunch offered at, on school side?
Right, and any other, exactly.
Okay, um, I, I, I do volunteers, um, the food is pretty simple, so. I would think, uh, the regulation, uh, should be in place. To check on the food, like pizza card and these, uh, other type of food. Uh, I think, uh, the regulation is the key, but I haven't really looked into that. If this is the main, main concern. I will look into it when I'm, uh, uh, if I, I'm elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Vadim.
So you have to satisfy the basic needs. If somebody is hungry, they're not going to learn, right? So being safe, coming to school, getting to school, the previous question. Um, you know, not feeling hungry, uh, are essential things that need to happen first. My understanding is that food is available. Um, I wish the quality of the food was a lot better. I know personally, my, my daughter is a freshman at high school, um, for the most part, she tries to stay away from, from, from this food because it's just not very high quality. I really wish that we included more local businesses in providing this food and, um, that the quality of it would be better. And focus on enabling access to the food. Um, I don't think kids have long enough breaks. And sometimes if they need to travel from one, one end of campus to another, they may choose to skip. The meal because they don't have enough time. So maybe looking into that as an issue why? Because the food is there, right? And, and, and the, you know, access is available.
Thank you. Alex.
Yeah, um, so yeah, so food is, so food insecurity is obviously a big issue, um, again, as a. If you're hungry and you're not able to sort of sustain your body and your mind, obviously no, no learning can be, can be made at school. Uh, food is available in all of the districts, whether it's high school, middle school, elementary, et cetera. Um, and so we have to really understand where does the issue still persist when we are making food available? Maybe the students don't feel comfortable approaching this food. Maybe it's Vadim mentioned, they don't have enough time, uh, to access this food. So we have to make sure it's accessible, available, um, and accepted socially. To actually get access to this food and consume it. And I would echo, uh, strongly, uh, the sentiments about making the food more healthy. And at the end of the day, uh, what we put into our bodies matter and it impacts how we learn, how we live our lives, how we develop as humans. Uh, I'm pretty sure more regulation would be appropriate for all, uh. Foods that goes into our schools, um, and it might be a wise investment from various, uh, governmental organizations. To actually invest more in this area so that we grow a healthy and stable. And thriving population of students that will carry our country forward.
Thank you. Next question. Your will be Vadim, then Alex, then Lee. What are your views about the parent-school partnership and how that relationship should most optimally work? Vadim.
Uh, so my kids have gone through public schools. I went to Springer, then Block. And like I mentioned, my daughter is a freshman at Mountain View High. We were really. Involved at elementary level. The opportunities were plentiful. Parents were welcomed in classrooms. It was an amazing experience to be there and collaborate with teachers. It's understandable that this sort of diminishes as kids grow. They don't want us in the classroom. The teachers may not want us in the classroom. Um, having more. Partnership, more collaboration with teachers, so the teacher gets firsthand experience of what, you know, parents. Uh, think about the value of, uh, that education that the kids are getting at school. Uh, is, is really important. Um, so I'll definitely look for ways. To reintroduce parent participation and allow, allow teachers to have access to that, um, information.
Thank you. Alex.
Could you repeat the question?
Yes, the question is, what are your views about the parent-school relationship? Our parent-school partnership and how that relationship should most optimally work?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so, um. Parents are actually essential to any school environment and of course their role sort of like takes a little bit of a different, uh. Different form as kids grow up and especially as they go into high school, uh, the kids just don't want the parents to be as involved. That said, in particular for underserved populations, the parent involvement is actually absolutely critical. I would actually say for everyone, but if we had to score them, the underserved population would be much higher on parent involvement. And so the school, I think, needs to better approach parents, in particular in communication of what is happening with their students, what is happening in the school. What are the opportunities, uh, for underserved population? I think there is room for specific programs for the parents. To help them better support their students, um, and sort of overall bringing parents. To be more aware of what's going on, to be more involved to the extent that's possible and to be more supportive of the various student needs. Depending again, again, on the student population of that particular group. Uh, would be very helpful and beneficial to overall growth of the school and the student success.
Thank you. Lee.
Yes, uh, I'm, actually the district have, uh, started a family partnership council. For exactly, uh, to enhance the dialogue between families and school as well as the students. Um, I, it was very educational for me, particularly in that council. Um, my understanding is, um, similar as what Alex, Alex eluded, underserved community. Family in- involvement is very important, is crucial. And, uh, as well, I, um, I organized a tea club at Mountain View High School for parents for exactly this reason. Uh, a lot of immigrant families because they came from a very different backgrounds. They don't quite understand what's resources available for them on campus. Um, even, uh, just a regular, uh, parents. Who even grew up over here, the, the high school environment has changed drastically. Uh, my advice would be have parents, um. Enable their kids to reach out to the resources themselves independently first. Um, I think a lot of encouragement to the kids will be useful because they are a lot of resources, college counselor. Uh, available, um, I, I think a communication, 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 that's the key. For have a better relationship and have, um, kids and family best utilize the resource that's available outside of school. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just have one quick question and then your closing statements. Um, how many, uh, M V L A board meetings have each of you attended? And, um, I'll start with Alex.
Eh, I've been personally to all of the first board meeting in the last couple of months and have, eh. Eh, actually joined on Zoom, um, various times throughout the last year and before that as well.
Uh, Vadim.
Yeah, well, so since when, right? Um, since I, since I declared my candidacy, I've been to every single one in person. Um, I've spoken to M V L A board meeting last year when on the subject that concerned me the most. Um, and prior to that, I've attended L S D board meeting just because my kids were in L S D and that was my focus at the, at that time.
Thank you. Uh, Lee.
Um, I've attended sparsely in the past couple of years, uh, now down to this year because, uh. I, uh, couple of years, I think I make, uh, the district wants it make. Available online, make it much more accessible to people to attend who has a full-time job. And this year I attended more regularly and I also spoke at, um, the board meeting regarding to ethnic. Uh, studies together with Vadim. So, yeah, I think for the subjects where, uh, we have more. Uh, there, there were more issues to discuss or more concern from the parent communities and if anyone, because I'm. A community leader, I'm very connected with the parents. So if. I hear something from the community that need to be addressed, I will pay more attention to those four meetings. So I've. Attended quite frequently online for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're gonna do, uh, closing statements. If you could try to, eh, eh, as it's already nine sixteen. We want to get some audience questions in. So if you could try to limit them to sixty seconds, that would be much appreciated, starting with Vadim.
Yeah, so thank you for the questions. Um, as, as was mentioned in introduction, when I came to the United States thirty-three years ago, the only two things I had. Was high school education that I received and back in Soviet Union. And a supportive family. And these are the two aspects that are driving me. To contribute to, back to M V L A. And to enable all kids to have a supportive adult, whether ideally it's a parent, uh, if not available, then at least teacher. And the first-class education, science education and overall education so that we can better prepare our kids for. Their future because learning starts early. In a professional life, I've been very much focused on growing people's careers and helping them for over ten years. So I have a strong appreciation for helping kids. Deal with all the distractions that are happening in modern world related to smartphones and the proliferation of social media. So that depending they go to college or any other activity after high school, they are much better prepared than, um, uh, to, to, to be successful.
Thank you. Uh, Alex.
Sure. So folks, as mentioned, I'm a mom to two students in Mountain View Los Altos Public Schools and two years I will be in M V L A right now in L S D. I'm a longtime resident as well and I deeply, deeply care about our community and schools. I have decades of experience in building teams and products at top tech companies while running my own small business. And as a result, I have a strong skill set of strategic planning, budgeting, leadership, visioning, strategic decision-making. I'm a former trustee at Bauman School where I helped open up a new high school, develop a five-year strategic plan and vision and improve mass education. My motivation to run really stems from a unique blend of passion, deep commitment to education. And the strong skills that I developed throughout my career, which will be very helpful to M V L A and, uh, on, on the board. I want to provide every student in our district with every opportunity. Really focusing on academic excellence and equity, promoting innovative academic pathways and ensuring equitable access for all students. I want to enhance mental health services, expanding accessibility and really destigmatizing mental health and making it part of daily hygiene ball. That's so it's part of preventive programs as well. Uh, I want to prepare folks, uh, students for college and career, offering career exploration opportunities. And really preparing students for success beyond high school or life beyond high school. I want to support our teachers, um, both on compensation and development front. I want to advocate for competitive teacher compensation and various programs to better develop them professionally. Um, I want to make sure that the environment for our students is safe and modern. Uh, I want to, I want to see the board investing in a safe environment, facility improvements to really optimize learning and well-being. And last but not least, I emphasize fiscal responsibility and transparency. Ensuring that we have budget transparency, long-term financial planning and strategic resource allocation. I'm passionate about supporting our students, teachers and community. I'm ready to bring fresh ideas and strong leadership to the M V L A school board.
Thank you. Uh, Lee.
Yes, hi, um, it's very simple why I want to run for M V L A school board. I, I want to give back to my community. I came here thirty years ago with luggage, very similar as Vadim, to fulfill my American dream. Um, my parents trusted me coming to this country. And I have a really much, much better life after I got, gone through a very great education in the United States. So I wanted all the kids, and I'm a former believer for public school system. My son had gone through K two twelve, he just graduated, got an excellent education. And everything is fresh in mind for me. And I think you only have, you only deeply understand the school system if you've gone through it. And I'm former believe that the public system, I should educate for all kids. So I will try my best if I'm elected, um, to provide, to maximize the resources available. And as a community leader, I actually engage with diverse parent groups such as the T, uh, club. And M V L A, uh, partnership council. So I want communities' voice be heard. And with my scientific training, it gives, gave me a very strong analytical background focused on responsible financial stewardship. With the blend of my person, personal on a professional experience. I aim to advocate for a more inclusive environment where our students and families feel valued and empowered to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Vadim, Alex and Lee, thank you so much for a great conversation. I'd like to now open it up to the attendees for questions. Please raise your virtual hand and I'll call on you. Um, we will be ending today right at nine thirty because, uh, two of the candidates have a, a meeting, uh. Me, you know, starting again another Zoom meeting at nine thirty. Um, so, uh, first hand up is Gary Haddon.
Good morning. Thank you all for being here to, it was great to hear your comments. Uh, I'd like to get back to the question of traffic around the schools. I'm with Greentown Los Altos. And we do a program at the elementary school level. Uh, called Walker Wheels and, and recently at Gardner-Bolus, we had ninety percent of the kids, uh, walking or riding a bike. Uh, to school. So it can be done. The kids know about biking. Uh, they don't need that. I mean, education is important, it's got to be continuous, but they know about biking and, and the values and importance of that. So. I, I need something more from you than just educate and, and you talk about parking and, and such. Well, that's a valuable resource that the schools have is, is the parking law. So incentivizes the use of that limited to, uh, certain. Attributes like, uh, if you have distance or after-school activities, uh.
Gary, you need a form.
I know it's more than a ninety seconds.
Please, no, no, no speeches, please, everybody.
So, and then prohibit the, how about prohibiting, uh, nearby on-street parking? And something to really get people to not carpooling, eh, not to be driving the car.
Um, Vadim.
Yeah, appreciate your question. I, I agree that additional training is not likely to help, right? We all know what the right thing to do. We live in. Amazing climate, one of the best in the world. There is no reason to drive. Um, you can bike, you can, you can walk. Um, so, you know, I'd love to entertain the idea of somehow rewarding students who actually walk. Uh, we do this in, uh, at workspaces, right? There are like bike days and. And there are benefits if you bike every day and you accumulate some number of biking hours or days that you can get some benefit, like. Programs like this that will encourage kids to consider alternative ways of getting to school, um, uh, beyond driving or being driven.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I actually have some inputs for you. Uh, thank you for the green tongue. I actually joined some of your activities on the weekend. Uh, so we at Mountain View High School, we actually have a parent group, uh, uh, rewarding kids, um, on Friday. Uh, we organize this every couple of weeks and then we give out the cases and certificates for the kids who bike to school on that day. Um, we found, um, it's best to have them start biking earlier. Once they get into the second, third, or fourth year, they get busy and they already get habit. Being dropped off and it's very difficult for them to start biking. Uh, so, um. We try to get the kids, I, when they just joined high school. Or, um, you know, also I think we have to make the road safer. I think a lot of times when we talk to the parents, they don't feel safe for their kids who bike to school. And that's one of the key reasons. So that need to be worked together with this. That would be my, a little bit of feedback to you for my personal experience.
Thank you.
I'll add that Gary, I completely agree with you. It's super important and education helps, but doesn't really solve things. I'll add that Gary, I completely agree with you. It's super important and education helps, but doesn't really solve things, right? Uh, so I think introducing bike lanes wherever they're not available is super important to help with safety. Um, and I will echo Vadim and, and Lee's points about various programs that incentivize kids to actually bike or walk. It can be things like peer pressure where you get certificates and like gain hours and like someone gets rewarded and you announce it at the school, uh, et cetera, right? Uh, and also I, what Lee has mentioned really resonates with me as well. This is all, all about building habits and making sure this is how your mind automatically thinks. You wake up in the morning, get ready for school, obviously you're biking, right? And so you have to start it early when you can sort of still influence kids and they're not as stressed. So all of these three things in combination, I think, would help.
Thank you. I'm gonna, there, there's gonna be two more questions. We're gonna, uh, very hopefully get in. So please limit your answers to the questions to one minute. Uh, first Jonathan Weinberg.
Uh, good morning. Thank you very much. Um, this has been a very, uh, interesting and educational forum. Um, I'm wondering if, if any of the candidates have a position on whether or not Los Altos High School should turn the, the current construction staging area into a parking lot. I know that the community who lives north of the high school would very much like to see that. Uh, it seems to be a less than popular idea with the school administration, but I'm curious what your, your opinions are.
It, it's funny. I just talked to, uh, one of my friends yesterday and my son went to Auburn, so I know a lot of parents in that area. And they, I think that the, what the, the feedback I got, they just wanted to be done over with. And so the construction has been going on too long, so, um, I'm, I'm not, um, I haven't really, uh, gathered the feedback from the community, what's, what's the best way how parents wanted or versus what administration wanted, um, this to be, but the decision should make relatively quickly. But then just keep at the construction site. That's the feedback. I, thank you.
Thanks. Again, please try to limit your answer, everybody, to sixty seconds. Uh, Alex?
Yeah, eh, so I think it's super important to actually figure out how to address the community concerns and make the high school a really good neighbor and provide parking spots so that the community doesn't feel the load. Uh, it seems that actually taking that area of construction and turning it into parking lot areas is one of the really good ideas to address that. There potentially could be others. Uh, I'd love to better understand the school administration concerns because sort of looking from the outside, that seems like a very legitimate idea and one that should be considered. So certainly I will work with the school administration to understand the concerns and figure out the best solution of how we can both be a great neighbor, um, and, uh, address the needs of the school district.
Thank you. Vadim?
Yeah, so the board is responsible to the community, right? Not to the administrators of the school. So definitely want to emphasize that I'm, I hear the community concerns. I'd love to understand what, why, uh, the school administration is not keen on that. Um, but we need to consider first and foremost what the community is interested in.
Thank you. Um, I'm just gonna jump in here. Uh, Tamara, you're gonna go next, uh, to conclude the program. Our next meeting will be, uh, Friday, uh, two weeks from today, October eighteenth, from eight-thirty to nine-thirty. Uh, please join us then for discussion entitled Los Altos Downtown Theater Feasibility Study Update with Vicky Reader and Gary Landers of Los Altos Stage Company. If you would like to be added to the L A C C mailing list, please send an email to info@losaltoscommunitycoalition.org. This email is posted in chat for your convenience. And a big thank you as always to Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation for providing L A C C with financial and in-kind support. And, and now Tamara Fagan to, uh, finish our program.
This is a really fast question. I just wanted to know the top three endorsements that each of the candidates has received.
Start with, uh, Vadim?
Yeah, so both outgoing, um, L A S D members, um, town crier, um, um.
I just said three, that's three.
Okay. Sure. And it's available on website, so you can go take a look.
Uh, Alex?
Yeah, absolutely. Eh, Santa Clara Democratic County, County Democratic Party has endorsed me. Both of the outgoing M V L A trustees and Los Altos Town Crier are probably the three I'd mentioned. And there is more on my website, so.
Lee, thank you.
Yeah, top three, uh, I'm endorsed by Los Altos School District Citizens Bond Oversight Committee Member as well as the, uh, the Supreme, uh, Super, uh, Assistant Superintendent Eric. Um, and you can look at the subs, gonna, I gathered a lot of community supports. Uh, because I'm not that political, so I want the community to support me. Uh, I believe this is not petition, uh, petition, um, election. And I got, uh, majority of the Montevideo City Council support. And I tried, I just tried to reach out to Los Altos, um, City Council. I just haven't got any feedback uh, yet. So, uh, you can view all my supports from the community on my website. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you once again, Vadim, Alex and Lee, for a great discussion today. We'll look forward to, uh, thanks to everybody for coming. We really appreciate your attendance. We will be, um, uh, posting the recording online and we will let you know through the various organizations that are part of L A C C when it's posted. Thanks once again to everybody. Very much appreciate it.